Starting our spiritual beings Bible study and this is the session for this, this go around is simply an overview. Okay, so when I say spiritual beings, what comes to y'all's mind?
Angels would be the first thing I think of.
All right, well, what about some of these images? Does God come into y'all's minds? Or how about, of course, you know, Billy's answer of angels, you know, you might think of that, got several wings, wing creature right here. I could see my mouse is stuttering, but that's okay. You got the, I guess, the cherubs and you got pretty much the stereotypical angel. All right, what about like Satan and the demons? You get some of these images come up for y'all? So the first thing we need to understand, remember, this session is more of just a primer. Is that we have to understand how biblical authors saw the world. We have to look at it from their eyes. And the most famous example, of course, is, you know, Genesis 1:1, you know, in the beginning, God created the skies and the land. And then we also have the second verse. Now, the land was wild and waste and darkness was over the face of the deep abyss. And the spirit of God was fluttering over the waters. And we have to understand once again, how biblical authors saw the world. We can't, we, we see a lot of things through telescopes, you know, through satellites, space exploration, you know, and we have to take a step back and see how the biblical authors solve things so that we can also understand scripture a little bit better. So there's a word study that will help us out a little bit and it's, there's, there's two words. You've got these two Hebrew words and, and don't let them scare you at all. Okay? Where we got Tohu and Vohu. And the first word, and this comes, remember, this comes from Genesis 1:2. Tohu means lacking form and purpose. It's desolate. We see a bunch of examples from like Deuteronomy 32. God found Israel in the land of wilderness and in Tohu, a howling wasteland. Or in Psalm 107, God pours contempt upon princes, making them wander in a Tohu with no path. So what does Tohu mean? It means lacking purpose and it's desolate. We also have, we also have Vohu. Vohu means empty, uninhabited, a wasteland. And we see passages from Isaiah and Jeremiah, which describe this emptiness, this wasteland in desolate cities with no inhabitants. So Tohu and Vohu. Now, the solution that God wants to do is he wants to bring order to chaos. We have a God who's very orderly. He takes things that are out of order and he makes them orderly. So in the first days of creation, he brings order to chaos. And then he takes those three days, right? God created everything in six days, right? And then he rested. Well, on the first through third day, he brought order to chaos. And then in days four through six, he fills this order with inhabitants. Okay? So we can see this. How, how God does this. Look at, um, on the, the column on the left, we have day one, two and three. We have God ordering of time. He creates light. He separates light and darkness, creates day and night. He orders space in day two, the waters above the sky dome and the waters below the seas. We'll talk about the sky dome here in a little bit. Day three, he orders dry land, you know, dry land emerges from the waters and vegetation and fruit trees emerge from the dry land. Okay, so remember, day one through three, God orders everything. And then day four through six, he fills up his creation with inhabitants. So in day four, he, he appoints lights that rule the day and the night on God's behalf. Day five, he anoints the birds to fly by the waters above and the fish to swim in the waters below. And then day six, we have the animals on dry land and human images of God that ruled the sea, land and skies creatures. Remember, we got the Tohu, the unordered, and we got the Vohu, the uninhabited. But then we see, we see these examples, these are the examples from the prior slide with scripture. Okay? So Genesis 1:3, in day one, let there be light. He separates light from darkness. Day two, God creates order by separating the waters from below and above. Day three, he separates the waters from the dry land, just from Genesis 1:12. And then we have how God fills in the gaps. Day four, let there be lights. God creates, separates the day and the night. He appoints the big light and the small lights to rule. In day five, you have creatures in the waters below and creatures in the waters above. And day six, you know, you have the everyone on land, the humans, the animals, all that. And then God says, he blesses the humans and says from Genesis 1, verses 26 to 28, you know, he blesses them and gives them a decree, fill the land of, subdue it and rule the fish of the sea, the birds in the air, and the beast of the land. Okay, so this is an example of God. From Genesis 2:1, we have the celestial and terrestrial rulers. Now celestial means what? The stars. And what does terrestrial mean? The earth. So we have rulers in, you know, the heavens, right? We would see this as stars. And we also have rulers on earth. So from Genesis 2:1, we have thus the heavens and the earth were finished, and all the host of them. Now, what is the host of them? And it means those who are appointed in to rule over the stars on God's behalf, of course. And also those who are to rule on the earth, you know, the humans, that that was what our decree was. God created us in his image. And then he appointed us to subdue the land, to rule over it and to increase and multiply. So God finishes appointing celestial and terrestrial rulers that are called the host of the heaven and the host of the land. And we get this from Genesis 2:1. And all the host of them, this is the host of the stars and of the earth. We also have another word from Hebrew, we got the hotote, and that means sign. Now, in Genesis 1:14, we read this. And God said, let there be lights in the vault of the sky to separate the day from the night. And let them serve as signs to mark sacred times and days and years. Now, if hotote and the vault of the sky and these signs, if they confuse you, don't just take a moment, okay? Our God likes to have pointers to himself. For example, if I look at another human being, we often, we, 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 in, in scripture, when we describe humanity, we describe how humanity was created in the image of God, right? So let's say I'm walking down the street corner, right? And I got my, you know, mask on because COVID-19 is still going on. And I see a fellow brother on the street. Now, that man who I see, he too was also created in the image of God. And as the image of God, he is a reminder, he is pointing to who God is. Okay? So when God creates everything, whether it be the stars or, you know, the earth or what have you, all of it is pointing back to himself, to remind us of who he is. So that's, that's what hotote means. God creates signs to point back to himself. So we can see it from here. So this last verse right here, Genesis 1:14. It's also not only pointing to God, but it's also pointing to other spiritual beings. This verse right here is foundational to us understanding spiritual beings in the Bible. The lights in the sky are portrayed here as heavenly rulers that govern with authority delegated from God. And let me say that again, okay? And remember, this is how the biblical authors might have seen the world, okay? God would appoint spiritual beings to rule on behalf of him. They are given authority, right? To rule on behalf of God. Their only power comes from God. So we see how when God created celestial beings to we see them as stars. We see them as globe, you know, big balls of gas in the sky, right? That's how we see stars. But how the biblical authors would see those lights in the sky, they would see them as rulers ruling on behalf of God in the heavens above, the host of heaven. So the biblical authors saw them as spiritual beings. Now, these spiritual beings, they're not more powerful than God. God created them. And they're ruling on behalf of him. So if we understand this small portion, when we read scripture, we can understand how God appoints figures, Elohim, spiritual beings to rule on his behalf. They're not more powerful than them, than him. But they're ruling on his behalf and they're also pointing back to God. Because who has all authority in heaven and on earth? Our Lord God. Now, we also have to understand the biblical authors would see parallelism. So for example, you have rulers in the skies and heavens above, okay? But you also have rulers on the earth below, right? The humans were ruling the earth on behalf of God. That was what Adam and Eve's job was. Now, we all know what happened with Adam and Eve, right? We threw away what we were given authority over with and then we were kicked out, right? That's, that's the understanding. But you have to see that, that parallelism with, you know, you got rulers above, you got rulers below in the heavens, you know, heavens and the earth, and there's that nice parallelism. That's how some of the biblical authors would see it. This is one viewpoint of scripture. You can disagree with it. I don't agree with everything that the Bible project presents, I'm presenting from, from their curriculum. But they, that's the whole point of this study is to see how, if we can understand how maybe the biblical authors thought, then maybe we can understand scripture in a better light. Because what we like to do is we like to take our, take our modern glasses, our literal modern glasses and look back at scripture and interpret it how we see the world. And sometimes that gets us in trouble. This is how we see the universe today, right? Sun, you got all the planets, and then I know Pluto isn't a planet anymore. It got like kicked to the curb. This is our segment of the universe and everyone orbits around the sun. Now, this concept, if we remember from school, it wasn't always around, you know, this is a theory of how we see the universe. Now, let me show you how the ancients saw the universe, okay? This is how most of the biblical authors saw the world, okay? At the center, you have the earth, right? Okay? Then we see this is all from Genesis, okay? This is the sky dome, okay? Then we have the firmament of the stars, firmament with the stars, okay? Then we have an ocean of heaven, see? And then above that is the heaven of heavens where God dwells. Okay, so how the ancients saw it was, you had waters above. And when it would rain, there would be little windows that would open and it would rain. Okay? So you also have waters down here, the primeval ocean. So when God made, when God ordered the world, he separated what? The waters, right? The dry land. See, it's starting to make sense now, right? And then under the earth would of course be the underworld, which in Hebrew is sheel. And they would see how there'd be pillars of earth holding this all up. Okay, now, you don't have to understand this 100%, but the big point you have to understand is that the ancients did not see the world like this. We see the world like this. They saw it more like this. And when you go back in, in Genesis 1 and read it and you kind of understand this sky dome, how they saw the world, a lot of it makes a lot more sense. So you have what? The terrestrial rulers on the earth, right? The humans. And then see, you also have the celestial rulers, which are stars, they're, they're ruling right here. And then you have a division and then you have the heaven of heavens where God dwells. So that's how they saw the world. So God is, and it's, it's cut off a little bit, but it's okay. I can see it. I'll let you know where it is. So God is depicted as dwelling above the heavens. So this transcend, transcend, transcendent realm above is the divine throne. If we look at the previous picture, this is where God is dwelling. Okay, that's how the ancients saw it. Okay? Now, we have several verses attesting this. We got Psalm 11:4. The Lord is in his holy temple. The Lord is on his heavenly throne. He observes everyone on earth. His eyes examine them. So God's up here. He's looking down. He sees everyone right here, right? He even sees those celestial rulers, see? He controls everything. He's, he's above it all. Okay? Here's another one from Isaiah 66. This is what the Lord says, heaven is my throne and earth is my footstool. That's a footstool. I mean, once you see the picture, it makes a lot more sense. Where is the house you will build for me? Where is my, where will my resting place be? Has not my hand made all these things? And so they came into being, declares the Lord. So imagine this for a second. Imagine you're building a house, okay? Joanne, you're building a house. All right, you build your house, you know, you got your nice door, maybe you painted a red door, you know, you got your nice little picket fence, you know, you got everything inside the house, okay? Now, when you finish the house, Joanne, do you become a part of the staircase? Well, no, 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 you didn't. You made the house. You don't become a part of your creation. You can go outside. You can leave your house. You could be in your house, out of it, all that. So if God created everything, he is out of the picture, right? He's above it all. He can, you know, go where he pleases. He's not connected to the earth, a part of his creation. No, he can walk through his house. He can go throughout his creation. So we can see God, like a lot of people limit God, you know, God's gotta be here or there. No, 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 he's, if he made everything, it's like you creating a house. You can go where you please. So we talked about where God, where we think, how the ancients saw where God dwelt, okay? Now, we also have to think about how God has a staff team with him, okay? It's not just God hanging out in heaven of heavens, you know, his heavenly throne. He also have, has staff who are helping out. And we see the host of heaven who are described in Genesis 1, they're set in the sky dome, okay? And these are the inhabitants of the divine throne room above the heavens. So from our picture, God's heavenly staff team is also hanging out in the heavens of heavens. And they can go where they please because, you know, God gives them missions and what have you, and we'll explore that more with the messengers, with the angels and what have you. But we also have a heavenly staff team who are with God. Biblical authors consistently use the language of the stars to describe heavenly beings. These are creatures that inhabit the heavenly realm and have authority under God. Billy, did you have a question?
Well, yeah, my question is, uh, when someone dies and goes to heaven, are they considered to be in the host of heavens, Darren?
Uh, I don't know. Um, there are several theories that that is outside of our study, but the answer I can pretty much give you is, we don't know. But we do know that we are with God. So that's the short answer I can give you. I can, uh, we can talk about it, um, but that's outside of our study. Is that okay?
Sure, no problem. Yeah.
I described how the host of heaven are God's heavenly staff team. Okay? Now, if you're, um, let's see. Okay, Joanne, you're gonna be my example for, for today, okay? Okay, you've built your house. Okay, let's say you're a queen, okay? You've got your kingdom, you know, you've got your, your throne room, you've got, you've got all these people underneath you, right? Now, you have people under you who serve you. And you got people cook, you got people who, 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 who build stuff, you got people who, you know, go to war for you, you got people who, you know, you got all kinds of people. Now, think of that with God. Okay, he's got his throne room, he's got his kingdom, he's got his entire creation in front of him, and he's, has beings he's created, you know, he's, he's created humans, he's created spiritual beings such as Elohim, he's created everything. And he also has a staff team who do missions for him. So we look at Psalm 103. The Lord has established his throne in heaven. We know that with the sky dome image, you know, the heaven of heavens. And his kingdom rules over all, right? Praise the Lord, you his angels, his messengers, you mighty ones who do his bidding, who obey his word. Praise the Lord, all his hosts of heaven, host of heaven being his staff team, you his servants who do his will. Or look at Psalm 148. Praise the Lord from the heavens, praise him in the heights above, right? In the heavens of heavens. Praise him all his angels, praise him all his heavenly hosts, where the heavenly hosts, the celestial rulers ruling on behalf of God. Praise him sun and moon, praise him all you shining stars. Remember, the biblical authors saw the sun and the moon and the stars as spiritual beings ruling on behalf of God. And we have some more verses right here. We got one from First Kings 22:19. Mekah said, therefore, hear the word of the Lord. I saw the Lord sitting on his throne, right? Heaven of heavens. And all the host of heavens, all his staff team, standing by him on his right and on his left. It'd be like you, Joanne, right? You would have people, you know, you're sitting in your throne room, sitting in your kingdom. And you would have people on your right and your left standing with you. So we can look at that from that analogy. Here's another example from Luke 2, verse nine and 13. And the angel of the Lord suddenly, suddenly stood before them, and the glory of the Lord shone around them, and they were terribly frightened. This would be the shepherds, of course, being frightened. Then suddenly there appeared with the angel a multitude of the host of heavens praising God. So there's the angel of the Lord before the shepherds. And then what? We see this, this is the Christmas story, right? We see the host of heavens. We see God's staff team, all with this angel of the Lord, who are proclaiming and praising God who's in the heavens. Okay, we also have, it's not the host of heaven, but we also have the sons of God, which are mentioned in scripture a lot. And this is from Job 38. Where were you when I laid the foundations of the land? And remember, this is God speaking to Job. Tell me if you have understanding, who set its measurements since you know, or who stretched a measuring, measuring line over it? When the stars of the morning sang together and all the sons of God shouted aloud. This is once again, just a little snippet. Once again, we have the stars of the morning, we have the celestial rulers ruling on behalf of God. And we also will have a lot of these beings referred to as sons of God. Okay? But once again, this is just a small little snippet. We'll have our own little session on it in the meantime. See, Spurgeon, what do you think about all this?
Well, I'm just getting at, uh, you know, this is pretty much, uh, you know, you're going back over what, uh, those of us that were at the class from the, uh, when the beginning, when we met before, whatever. So I'm, I'm kind of thinking, you know, of, uh, what, what we were leading up to before, uh, you know, with the Niff, Paulheim and the Seraphim and all that. And I know you're gonna say, we'll get to it.
There's another thing we have to understand, okay? In Genesis 2, we have the Garden of Eden, right? Everyone's familiar with this. This is like Sunday School 101, okay? Now, the Garden of Eden is described as a cosmic mountain, okay? Now, we have to think, think about this for a second, okay? Let's go back, let's go back to this picture right here. Okay, this is how the ancients saw the world. So here's the earth, right? We have the heaven of heavens, okay? Now, imagine the Garden of Eden being right here, okay? Imagine it being a mountain, okay? Now imagine the heaven of heavens coming down right here and overlapping, okay? So we have the earth right here, you know, here's Eden. And we have the heavens coming down and overlapping, okay? So in the Garden of Eden, it's like an overlapping where God is with humanity. Because remember, humanity was described, was appointed to rule the earth. So God dwelt in Eden with Adam and Eve, right? Heavens came down and humanity was with God. So this, picture this as an overlapping. Eden is a place where God's heavenly space, the heaven of heavens, and humanity's earthly space overlap in unity, okay? So Eden is a place where God's heavenly space and humanity's earthly space overlap in unity. Here's some of the verses from Genesis. Now, a river flowed out of Eden to water the garden, and from there it divided and became four headwaters. Or look at Joel. Blow the trumpet in Zion, sound the alarm on my holy mountain, which is Eden. Before them, the army, the land that is like the Garden of Eden, and behind them, a desert wasteland. You were in Eden, this is from Ezekiel, the garden of God, you were on the holy mountain of God. So when humanity, when Adam and Eve were with God, you had the heavens overlapping with the earth, and there was this place where God was dwelling with humanity. Okay? What happened with Adam and Eve? They disobeyed, so they were cast out of this land where God was dwelling with them, right? To, to what? The earth. And they were separated, right? God was in the heavens and then humanity was on the earth, right? So disobedience, you know, this place, it crumbled, you know, we wanted to rebel, so God's like, okay, kick this out, and that's what happened. So we have, um, the promise of how a restored Jerusalem, remember God's city, uses the ancient Garden of Eden as an archetype, as a model of new creation. And this creation is always situated on a high mountain. Okay, look at Isaiah 2. In the last days, the mountain of Yahweh's temple, of God's temple, will be disestablished at the highest of mountains, it will be exalted above the hills, and all the nations will stream into it. So here is an archetype of model of Jerusalem, how it'll be a new Eden, it'll be a new creation. Echoing back the Garden of Eden. Uh, look at Ezekiel 40, verse 2. In a vision to God, he took me to the land of Israel and set me on a very high mountain, on whose south sides were buildings that looked like a city. See, so we had this promise of God restoring what it was like, a new heaven and a new earth, a restored Eden, where humanity would dwell with God, where it wouldn't just be an overlapping, it'll be a unity together. And that's what Christ brings to us. Through Christ, we can go, we, we can be part of this new creation and dwell with our God forever in a new Jerusalem, which comes out of what? The heavens. And we see that in Revelation, but that's a whole nother story. Uh, Billy, do you have a question?
I do. I'm sorry, simple minded Billy. Okay, God creates the earth, he separates, et cetera, et cetera. So I, my concept is Eden was on the earth, but you're saying it was between the earth and the heavens?
Um, no, like, okay, we'll go, no. It, remember it was a mountain?
Yeah.
So imagine it being like a mountain. Okay, let's say this is Eden, right? Here's the earth. And there's some mountains over here, but in this picture, but there's also mountains on the earth, okay? So let's say this is Eden. God came down and there was an overlapping. Okay, so like, uh, yeah. So Eden was, is clearly described as a mountain. Now, in scripture, Billy, when Jesus was walking around, where did all the, the times where God would appear, where would God show up most of the time?
Well, on, on the mountains, but I just, when I read, when I remember Adam and Eve having to put clothes on because they had been tempted, you know, I, I don't have a concept of it being the mountain, but obviously by Joel and Isaiah, it is. And I guess I was shocked when you were saying it was a mountain because it clearly is, yeah.
Yeah, cuz I mean, like, like right here, we got Genesis 2:10, now a river flowed out of Eden, where you get water from mountains, right? So it's a water the garden, and from there it divided and became four headwaters. Yeah, so you have Eden, you know, we, we picture it as a garden. But we can also picture it as a mountain too. You know, maybe there was a mountain and there was a garden, you know, at the foothills of it. When I was sitting, when I was in India, I was, uh, in, um, I was in Daridun, and it's at the foothills of the Himalayas, right? And I was sitting there and I was eating this awesome, um, Chinese food. And I was at the foothills of the Himalayas and everything around me was green. And you could just see all this green because there were waters coming down. So that's how I kind of, maybe that's how it looked, you know? We're not really sure, but we had this, uh, mountain, um, this cosmic mountain view. And remember, when I asked you, uh, I hear this, everyone. When the Israelites were delivered out of Egypt, right? Where did they go? To Mount Sinai where God was. So they get, right? They get to Sinai and then God's like, okay, come up here. You know, come and dwell with me, right? And so what? You had Moses and like, what, 70 elders and what have you? And they go up and they're like, hey, you need to go up for us. And then Moses goes on top of the mountain with God. Or you have what? Um, when Jesus ascends, Or you have what, um, when Jesus ascends, he ascends on a mountain, right? Or the transfiguration, what, they go up to a mountain, and then Jesus is transfigured. You have it again and again echoing the same archetype, where God dwells with his people on mountain tops, where there's an overlap. So here's, here's another example from Revelation twenty-one nine, and this is John speaking. And he carried me away in his spirit to a mountain great and high, and he showed me the holy city Jerusalem coming down out of heaven from God. We don't go to heaven, heaven comes down here in a new heaven and a new earth, a new creation. Or look at Revelation twenty-one one. There, then he showed me a river of water of life clears crystal coming from the throne of God and the lamb. The garden of Eden was, had waters coming down from it. Here we have water coming from what? The waters of eternal life coming from what? From the throne of God and the lamb and of Jesus. So in review, Eden is depicted as a cosmic mountain, a place where God's heavenly space and humanity's earthly space overlap in unity, and this is foundational for us understanding the Bible. Once you understand this, it opens up a lot of things, right? Maybe when you read Revelation, now you're like, oh man, that actually kind of makes sense, you know, I don't understand all of it anyway. But the ultimate goal of God, God's plan is for humans to live and rule the world alongside him in, in heaven and earth, in heaven and earth place, in a new heaven and a new earth. And we will see that with Jesus when we, when we, um, get to that.
My mind is just racing. I can't wait to get into the scripture and, and find out about all this.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's fun stuff. I didn't learn about it till about four years ago, and it's just interesting seeing it from a, a different perspective, and so Psalm eight shows us how later biblical authors, okay, this is later on, okay? Understood God's purposes in placing humanity in the high Eden temple to rule what? We are given authority by God to rule as God's image, right? We are God's image, we are pointing to God, we're appointed to rule over the earth, to rule on his behest, to point back to him. We are to rule as God's image over all creation, including over the other spiritual beings. Okay, luckily, this isn't cut off, okay? This is the entirety of Psalm eight, okay? Now, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna read it, okay? And the bold, you'll see the bold text, they'll kind of point to some of these themes, okay? Oh, Lord, our Lord, how majestic is your name in all the earth, who has displayed your spl- splendor above the heavens, right? From the mouth of infants and nursing babes, you have established strength because of your adverse, adversaries, to make the enemy and revengeful cease. When I consider your heavens, the work of your fingers, the moon and the stars which you have ordained, right, that's celestial rulers ruling on behalf of God, that's how the ancients saw it. What is human that you take thought of him? And the son of human that you care for him? Yet you have made him a little lower than Elohim. Elohim, meaning spiritual beings. And you crowned him with glory and majesty, you make him to rule over the works of your hands, over his creation. You have put all things under his feet, all sheep and oxen, and also the beasts of the field, the birds of the heavens and the fish of the sea, whatever passes through the paths of the seas. Oh, Lord, our Lord, how majestic is your name in all the earth? So in this song, we have a little snippet of how there'll be one day where we not only will rule alongside with God, you know, we're not gonna be on the same, now, don't get me wrong, okay, we're not gonna be on the same equivalent level as God, okay, we're not, no, never, okay? But how there will come a time where not only will we rule those earth, but we will also be over the other spiritual beings that were appointed by God, you know, some of like, like the stars and the heavens and all have you. Yes, Billy, you have a question?
Well, it's just me, you just look at my note and see that I have a question. What, what version of the Bible uses the word Elohim? Because I'm looking up at King James that uses angels, New International Version uses spiritual beings.
Yeah.
Is that, is that one of the same, is that what you're saying, Jared?
Okay, so there are actually two versions of this song, okay? Now, textual criticism isn't the focus of our study, to be short of, okay? You have one source that has it like this on your screen, okay? You have another source that uses a different manuscript that talks about angels. For our study, we're looking at it from the Elohim variant, okay, but when you open your Bible, I don't know if y'all have noticed, but when y'all open your Bible, sometimes at the very bottom, it'll say like, other manuscripts, other variants, other versions have this, this, and this. This is an example, Psalm eight is an example of one of these phenomena. Now, don't let that scare you or anything, you know, there are different readings, but the Bible, everything is, is right there before us. We have every single thing. You know, there's no hidden agendas, there's no secret society that, you know, decided, okay, this is what it's gonna be, anything like that, okay, but that's just a very brief explanation of how some versions look at it from one reading, and other versions look at it from another perspective. For the stu-, for this study, we're looking at as, um, the source that uses Elohim, that uses spiritual beings. But there's the other variant has angels. Does that answer your question?
Sure.
Okay, but that's a good question. I know Mark Chase asked that same question, um, after the study, cuz he was reading in King James, he's like, what? Mine says angels, I'm like, yeah, I know, this is one of those examples of others, a couple of readings, so. Because the garden of Eden is a place where heaven and earth overlap, it is no surprise that we find humans in the presence of God and heavenly beings like the cherubim. And the example we're gonna look at is Genesis three, verse twenty-two through twenty-four. So this is an example of humans encountering heavenly beings. Then the Lord God said, behold, the man has become like one of us, in knowing good and evil. Now lest he reach out of his hand and take also the tree of life and eat and live forever. Therefore, the Lord God sent him, sent Adam, out of the garden of Eden to work the ground from which he was taken. He drove out the man, and at the east of the garden of Eden, he placed the cherubim and a flaming sword that churned every way to guard, to guard the way to the tree of life. So, we have this overlapping, right? Heaven and earth are overlapping in the garden of Eden, and there's no surprise that humans not only encounter God, but they also encounter other spiritual beings that are working on behalf of God. The cherubim, whom we were gonna jump into last February, but then it got canceled, are one of the examples, spiritual things. The cherubim are guardians on behalf of God, but once again, we will get there, we will explain it, but this is one example. Now, another example that y'all all know, okay, this is Sunday School one oh one is what? Another example of heavenly beings, this snake, right, Genesis three one, right? What does it say? Now, the serpent was more crafty than any other beast of the field that the Lord had made. He said to the woman, did God actually say, shall not eat of any tree in the garden? So from this verse, we see how the snake is called a beast of the field. But when we read it, we don't really see talking snakes in nature, right? So this, this being is, it's not just a normal animal, it can talk, and it claims to have some kind of knowledge of God's heavenly decisions. So from verse, uh, Genesis three, verse five, for God knows that in the day that you eat it, your eyes will be opened, and you will be like what? Like Elohim, like spiritual beings, knowing good and evil. So Genesis three one, the snake is an example of humans encountering heavenly beings in this overlapping, you know, the cosmic mountain, where heaven and earth overlap.
I was always taught that Elohim was the plural of God.
Okay, it could be both, okay? We will have a study, our next session is on Elohim.
Okay.
Okay, but for, uh, to answer your question, Elohim can be singular, and it can be plural in Hebrew. Okay, there are multiple examples of this. In Genesis one, we have God described as Elohim. In Genesis two, we have the Lord described as Elohim Yahweh, Lord God. But in certain situations, based on the context in Hebrew, Elohim can be singular, and it can also be plural.
Right.
Depends on the context.
Okay, but you're saying that it's spiritual beings?
Yes. It could be both, it, it, it depends on the context. Like, in Genesis one, we don't interpret as, in the beginning, God's created heaven and earth, well, no, no, no. We see it as God. But then, in Genesis two, we have the specific Elohim name, Elohim Yahweh, Lord God. It was Yahweh who did all this, who created everything.
Jared, uh, this is Billy, I justify it by saying, Eloise, if it's capitalized, it's the living God or God. If it's not, it's spiritual beings. Does that make sense, Jared?
Yes, yes, so, um, in, and also too, in, in Hebrew, there is no capital letters. So it depends on the context, but yes, if it's lowercase, yes, it's spiritual beings. But then you have, like, uh, there's certain examples in scripture where it's capitalized, where it's talking about Yahweh, it's talking about our God. But we had a, um, there's some confusion with this. I had someone come up to me and they were like, whoa, 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 well, you said this is plural. And if I read Genesis one, it says, I can, I can interpret it as God's creation, my, no, 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 no. It's based on the cuz for example, if we go back here, look at twenty-two, okay? Then the Lord God, see, this is that example I was telling you about, right? Lord, so Elohim, no, excuse me, this is Yahweh Elohim, okay, that's what it is in Hebrew, but we translate it's Lord God. Behold, the man has become like one of us. Who's, who's kinda talking about? I mean, it's only one God, right? One of us, he's also talking about the, the other Elohim who are with him, you know, those who are ruling on his behest, the heavenly hosts. They are also described as Elohim, but we will describe this next week, we will go into it in more details, where with the specific examples, and it'll be much more clear. Does that help y'all out for now?
I'll wait until next week.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, it'll be much more clear, I promise. So there are hints of this, this snake being a spiritual being, being an Elohim, and it's, it's confirmed by the word choice, okay? Now, in Hebrew, there's this word nikosh, which is one of the many words for snake, okay? Now, the author could have used other words, he could have used seraph, he could have used paten, he could have used tisfomi, but instead he chose with this one. Now, it's more than likely that this word nikosh, the word he used, is a word that rhymes with other Hebrew words, which mean to practice divination or sorcery. So we got nikesh from Deuteronomy eighteen ten. Now, this ritual is often associated with astrology, child sacrifice, and also the worship of stars and heavenly bodies, and we see this in Second Kings with these various verses. Now nikosh also rhymes with the Hebrew word for bronze, which is neko- nikoshet. And this main precious metal was used for shiny reflections, okay? Now, here's the thing, okay? Spiritual beings in scripture are often described as shining like bronze, okay? The cherubim in Ezekiel, remember, you open up Ezekiel and you have that really weird image of, you know, the cherubim and all these creatures are described as shining. And we also have angels described in Daniel as shining. So maybe when the author of Genesis was writing this, he was pointing to a few hints of how this snake wasn't just a normal snake, how he was actually a spiritual being, because of the words described, used, used to describe him. And once again, you don't have to understand all of this right now, this is just a little sneak peek of when we get to the Satan and the demons later on, and that'll be probably our fifth session, okay? That's after the cherubim and the angels. The story of humanity's exile from the garden temple, the garden of Eden, is a descent from their intended home in united heaven and earth, right? We were, we humanity were supposed to dwell with our God, you know, in the garden of Eden forever, and then we disobeyed. Then we see Genesis three through eleven depicting an increasingly corrupted world that results not only from humanity's rebellion, but also a rebellion from the spiritual beings. We'll talk about the divine council, God's heavenly staff team, and the Satan and the demons later on. Okay, your homework for next week is think about all the names and titles of God. Write down as many as you can. Reflect on God's names and the titles given to him in scripture.